Good evening, this is the April 28th, 2021, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see a full house. It's the first time in probably a year and a half that we've seen anybody in the audience, so thank you all for coming. And tonight, Joel Hamilton's joining us by Zoom. I don't know, yep, there's Joel, and the rest of us are here. So we've got a full agenda this evening, and we'll take a look at, depending on the timing, we may look after the second public hearing at taking a five-minute recess. We'll see how the time goes and make a decision at the time. So, let's move on with the agenda. First item is approval of the April 14th minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, deletions? Did anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Dennis moves, second. Rich, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, minutes approved. So, the next item is a public comment period. Normally, we don't have anybody in the audience to make any comments, but it's for issues that are not before us this evening, so if there's anybody out there that would like to speak, we would love to hear from you.
But not on the show.
But nothing on the agenda for tonight.
Not the hearings.
Oh, we can get a copy for you.
Copy outside the door.
It's separate from the hearing comments.
Okay, so we'll move on to the second or the third item rather. The public hearing, proposed planned unit development, preliminary plat of a 2.16-acre parcel located at 1606 East Third Street within the city of Moscow, and a replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of Harvest Hills First Edition and the Harvest Hills PUD. So we'll start with the presentation from Mike. We'll go into a public hearing at the conclusion of that, and then after that closes, the commission will deliberate. So, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. Assuming everybody on Zoom can see that?
Yes.
So before you tonight, we have a public hearing for the Harvest Hills planned unit development and replat of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Harvest Hills First Edition. Lot 1, Block 1, Harvest Hills First is a 2.16-acre parcel. Applicant is Phil Rangins, and he's requesting a proposed PUD and a replat. It would include 10 twin-home parcels ranging from a little over 2,600 square feet to 6,600 square feet in size, four townhouse parcels from 2,592 to 3,852 square feet in size, and then one neighborhood business parcel of 17,905 square feet in size. And it would also include a circular private street that would provide access to these So this is the subject property in the center of your screen, highlighted in red. You can see Paradise Creek flows through the northwest boundary of the property, ends up heading south here, Third Street makes the connection. This is a photo from 2018, so all the infrastructure's been put in for Harvest Hills First Edition up to this point where the road's currently blocked. And the majority of the twin homes have been constructed on these properties. I believe that there's one or two that are currently under construction and left to be constructed now. And this would be the neighborhood business property here. Got a stormwater detention pond in the northeast corner, as well as a small stormwater parcel here in this corner here that carries the Rolling Hills additions. So I'll save you from the long background, we'll cover that within Harvest Hills Second Edition. This is more of the abbreviated history of this property. But in 2013, there was a preliminary plat for the Harvest Hills Edition and included the entire property. So the entire property is 24.7 acres in size. It was similar to a previous plat that was approved back in 2005. That was referred to as the Windfall Hills Edition. And at the time, it was proposed to be 75 lots, which ranged in size from a little over 7,000 square feet to 19,496 square feet in size. And after going through and receiving approval for the project, the applicant determined the project was not financially feasible, never advanced to the final plat stage, which comes after the preliminary plat. And this was the plat that was approved at the time, so you can see a similar alignment to what the applicant is proposing with the Second Edition, which will be the next item for consideration tonight, but included the entire property. There's Moser Park, which has been dedicated but not developed. And then this property ended up being Phase 1, and it ended up being developed in a little different style as it was approved back then. This was mainly for just single-family R2 development. Then in 2015, Harvest Hills First Edition was proposed, and that just included that 7.45-acre portion, very westerly end, adjacent to Mountain View and Third Street. And there was a rezone included within that, a comprehensive plan land use amendment, and a preliminary plat. Preliminary plat included 22 twin-home lots. The rezone was to rezone it from an R2 designation to a combination of neighborhood business and R3, which is medium-density residential. And it also included that one neighborhood business lot within the plat. And then in February 1st, 2016, City Council ended up approving the rezone and the comp plan amendment. And then following April 18th of that year, the council ended up approving the preliminary plat for the First Edition, and it had three conditions on it. One of those conditions required the applicant to dedicate nine on-street parking spaces on the north side of Third Street. So, Third Street's a designated collector, and there's no on-street parking to accommodate the bike lanes. And so at the time, council was concerned the lack of parking in the subdivision, and so that was a requirement to provide nine of those parallel on-street parking spaces. The other two conditions, one referred to the widening of the right-of-way near the intersection of Third and Mountain View, and that was to accommodate a left-hand turn lane there. And then the third was a memorandum of understanding for the Jansen Street connection, which we'll talk about a little later. And so this was the plat that was approved. You can see the 22 twin-home lots, south side and north side. This is the neighborhood business lot. You see the turn lane, the three lanes here for the widening. Ended up carving a niche out of the neighborhood business parcel, so it was 2.2 acres, got reduced to 2.16. And then there's the nine on-street parking spaces that you can see on the north side of the street there. So that brings us to the property today. Again, this is a 2018 image, but the topography should have been graded by that point, so these represent one-foot contour lines, generally about a 6% slope to the property. And this is the floodplain in the area. So part of the dedication of the First Edition was to dedicate the portion of the property that's in the floodplain. So this portion here ended up providing a path and access to the stormwater detention pond, as well as a pathway on the east side of Mountain View and the south of Third Street as well, so the pathway continues. And that was part of the parkland dedication. So the 100-year floodplain only touches actually the city's park property now, here in the northwest corner, and the 100-year floodplain's the red line. The floodway is actually the crosshatched area there, so a little bit of difference. Taking a look at the current comprehensive plan land use designation, it's currently designated as suburban commercial. What that means is it's intended to provide local neighborhood commercial services in a manner that's compatible with a residential neighborhood environment. Lands approximate for the designation include areas in close proximity to higher-density residential development and intersections of designated collector and arterial streets near residential development. And then looking at development within the designation should include additional building-scale design standards, and then it points to the neighborhood business zone as being the most appropriate. And looking at our thoroughfare plan, you can see these faint lines, but the green dash line represents a collector designation, which Third Street is. Ends up making a transition as Third Street hits Mountain View, so east of Mountain View becomes a collector. And then Mountain View is a minor arterial, which is our highest roadway designation in the city, just behind National Highway. So this is the current zoning designation, so it's zone neighborhood business. And then, of course, the twin-home lots are zoned R3 on the south side and the north side of the street. All the surrounding property is moderate-density residential, which is the R2 zone. So looking in the zoning code, what neighborhood business states, "It's appropriately applied in the following circumstances: Where local commercial facilities will serve the everyday needs of a limited neighborhood area; Where activity levels associated with small-scale office development can be accommodated or tolerated by surrounding land uses and existing public services; Where a neighborhood core is identified which is easily accessible by pedestrian or vehicular circulation; Where the commercial development will result in minimal interference with residential uses in the vicinity of the neighborhood business district." So taking a look at the variety of uses that are currently permitted in the neighborhood business zone, really all residential uses are permitted as long as they're behind or above a commercial use on the property. Also, community and neighborhood gardens, so urban agriculture, fitness centers, veterinary services, professional offices, restaurants, coffee espresso, childcare facilities, community and neighborhood centers, healthcare services, museums, art galleries, religious facilities, retail personal services, parking areas, and bed and breakfasts, and are all permitted use within the zone. So that brings us to the replat of just this parcel. So 10 twin-home lots, and ranging from 2,600 to 6,600 square feet in size. We've got four townhouse parcels ranging from 2,500 to 3,800 square feet in size, and then the one neighborhood business of 17,905, and the private street accessing those lots. So, this is the plat that was submitted. You can see Third Street here to the south. This would be where the current vehicular approach is on the property, and it would meet our private street standards, so it'd come in and loop around. We've got nine angled parking spaces that would be included in the center island, which is open space. And these would be the twin-home lots, and then transitioning to the four townhouse lots on the west side, and that would be the 17,000-square-foot neighborhood business lot. So the PUD also contains 10 twin-home dwellings, four townhouse dwellings, and the neighborhood business parcel. The applicant's intending that any use, so it's currently proposed to be vacant, there's no development proposed at this time, but they would like any use or combination of uses permitted within the existing neighborhood business zone, which would be allowed right now on the entire property. And then private circular street, and then the center open-space island with the nine angled parking spaces. And so this is the PUD site plan showing the building footprints and the parking detail that was submitted, so you can see the twin-home lots here, and then the four townhouses here. These are the elevations that were submitted, so these are essentially the same building style, footprint, design as the existing twin homes that are already constructed with Indian, or, excuse me, within Harvest Hills First Edition. Those are the rears, and then the side elevations. And this is the floor plan, so on the first floor, you have the living room, dining room, kitchen area, as well as a bathroom, some closets, and then the one-car garage with ample room in the driveway for an additional car. And then the second floor, you have four bedrooms, one of which includes the master bedroom, and two bathrooms, and a laundry closet. And then this is the proposed townhouse elevations, so these are essentially similar to the twin-home design, except townhouses are three or more combined units on separately-platted lots, so these would be four. And then a similar design of the floor plan to the twin homes. You can see the living room, dining room, and kitchen on the first floor with a bathroom, and then second floor contains the four bedrooms. And this is our private street detail, which is in city street standards, so this would be the design for the street that circulates the lot. Currently, it's 20 feet in width, and then anytime there's hydrants, which there are none in the circle, you would have 26 feet. And there's an option for whether the developer includes a sidewalk, or the commission or council requires a sidewalk. The applicant in this circumstance has provided a sidewalk on one side of the street, which loops all the way around the development. So there are a few PUD deviations, which is permitted per the PUD code. Exterior side yard setbacks, our majority of them meet the eight-foot setback and actually exceed the eight-foot setback, but because of the pie shape of numerous lots within the circle, they're proposing a reduction, and they get down to about seven and a half feet, but are requesting a little bit of flexibility to allow some of the lots to go down to seven feet instead of the eight feet for the exterior side yard setbacks. Front setbacks typically are 20 feet for neighborhood business, requesting a range between eight and 25 feet, and it's mainly the lots where you first come into the private street on the right-hand side, which are a little tight there, and just to fit the building footprint is really tight on the lot, and so requesting a reduction in the front yard setbacks as well. Garage setbacks are all 20 feet, which accommodate a car, so those all meet the requirements. Rear setbacks, majority of those are 20 feet, and those all meet the rear yard setback requirement. Third street side, so anytime you typically have a front yard setback, and then you have a street-side setback, so there would be a, what would appear to be a rear setback on some of those lots, but it would actually be a street-side setback. It's typically 10 feet for neighborhood business, just because of the depth of those lots, it's getting really tight with the building footprint, so they're requesting a five-foot setback instead of a 10-foot setback on that third street side. And then the townhouses, front and rear setbacks all satisfied with a 20 feet. Exterior side setbacks, there's only two exterior sides. Lot number five has well over eight feet because of a sewer easement that runs there. And then Lot 2 is being proposed to be reduced from eight to three, and that would be adjacent to the neighborhood business, so it'd be adjacent to the commercial lot to the south. Landscaping, so generally, within our matrix in the zoning code, a 10-foot-wide Type A landscape buffer is typically required along the exterior property lines, so neighborhood business zone property when adjacent to R2 or R3, just because of, we already know what the use is. So really, the intention is to buffer potentially some of the higher-intensity commercial uses that would be allowed in neighborhood business with residential uses in R2 or R3 zones. You typically do that with landscaping. In this case, we know what the use is going to be with the twin homes, and so staff would not recommend that a Type A buffer be around those exterior property lines for the twin-home lots, but for the commercial neighborhood business lot when that ends up being developed. Utilities, looking at water service, there's currently water mains in Mountain View and Third Street. They're going to be looped around the private street. Our 2012 comprehensive water system plan, the existing system has adequate potable and fire flows, is what that indicates. Sanitary sewer is the same, so there'd be a main constructed within the private street. And then also, our 2011 comprehensive sewer system plan also indicates that there's adequate flow into the future within that area. Storm sewer is eventually conveyed through mains in the private streets to stormwater detention ponds. Those have already been constructed within the First Edition. And then, the stormwater's then detained at the pre-development rate before being discharged into Paradise Creek. Parkland dedication has already really been satisfied. They dedicated two parkland tracts within Harvest Hills First Edition. One was 3,333 square feet, so that was that 25-foot linear pathway on the east side of Mountain View, south of Third, and then this was the property just north of Third, which amounted to 22,491 square feet. Also included the area adjacent to Paradise Creek in that northwest corner. And those were those two areas that were previously accepted by City Council as parkland for just this addition. So with that, staff recommends that the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed PUD with no conditions, recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following two conditions. And those are both coming from engineering, that the stormwater runoff control facility design be evaluated to verify that there would be zero net increase in the rate of stormwater runoff from the development as a result of the design changes. And then the second one refers to a stormwater swale. Typically, you're not required to show utilities on the preliminary plat, but we like to take a look to make sure that they're able to be achievable. The stormwater, a portion of it, there's a swell on the park property, and typically, if the applicant's previously dedicated a property towards parkland dedication, you can't also have stormwater, private stormwater facilities on that property, so we just need to work with the applicant to figure out an alternate location for the stormwater, just on a few lots on the west side. But, proposed stormwater swale running north to south along the east side of the parkland parcel shall be relocated, so it will not be on property previously dedicated as parkland for the development. And then in accordance with the commission's decision on the PUD and preliminary plat, direct staff to prepare the RCS. And I certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike from the commissioners?
I have one.
Victoria?
So, Lot 2, that only has the three-foot setback on the one side, that's adjacent to the neighborhood business area, and that will have a buffer, so in effect, there will be a wider buffer than three feet between the house and whatever goes in there. It's just part of it's going to be the business buffer, and part of it's going to be the house buffer.
That actually wouldn't be a buffer. I mean, the zone's not changing on this entire piece, so all these lots, even though they're going through a PUD, it's all going to be neighborhood business still. So it's, the boundary for neighborhood business is still going to reach all the way around this entire property. It's just that all these lots are being developed as residential uses. So there won't actually be a 10-foot buffer between the townhouse and whatever gets built on the commercial neighborhood business property. The only buffer would be required on the exterior property lines of the neighborhood business, so it'd just be on the west as well as the south, and it'd be 10 feet wide.
Okay.
Although, if there was a parking lot that was constructed here on the north side, I mean, likely there'd be a parking lot between the townhouse and whatever is constructed on the property, just because there's a larger building footprint as you head south. So it's likely that there would be a parking lot that would be placed between the townhouse and the building that gets built there. So that would require a three-foot buffer for landscaping for the parking lot, so you would have some separation there.
Yeah, so it's guesswork at this time, but that's kind of how I was thinking it would happen, so that there really would be a little more buffer there.
Any other questions for Mike? Mike, I do have one question, or perhaps a clarification. In residential uses permitted in a neighborhood business, it says above or behind the commercial facility. These don't appear to be above or behind where the commercial facility would be, so how, I'd like to reconcile that particular piece.
Well, you know, generally, through the PUD process, you're able to make deviations like that, but typically, what we would say is that the prominent intersection there, the prominent corner, is going to be here. So, this is really the front of the property on the corner, and so everything back here, we would probably declare as being behind a commercial use on the property. So, to me, that would still meet the intent, even though you're allowed flexibility with the PUD.
Okay. So, the fact that the front of the commercial facility is going to be out to the private road, it's still considered to be behind?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions for Mike? All right, Mike, thank you very much. With that, we will open the public hearing. A couple of housekeeping items. One is that if you speak tonight, would you please sign up on the roster out in the hallway so that we can get names and addresses correct? The other is, we'd like to limit your time of speaking to three minutes, if you would, and please give us your name and address. I think what we'll start with is the applicant and anybody in favor or in support, then we'll move to anybody that has any objections or neutral. So, with that, we'll start the presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Utilities running through that, and that's kind of why we wanted to look at the utilities and just kind of see where the density's going to be with those. So, that centerpiece has a lot of utilities, but I think, you know, it has some great landscape opportunities to really enhance that centerpiece.
Thank you. Okay, great, thanks, Scott, appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I'll...
Okay, very good, thank you. And Phil, did you want to speak?
I'm Phil Ryan Gians, the applicant. I reside at 620 East Plush River Drive here in Moscow, and I did have a few comments about the design process and some of the requests for variances in the setbacks. Because of the nature of the property, it lends itself toward a lot of pie-shaped lots, and so there's several pinch points where we're trying to build a house that's sufficiently wide, that we have adequate circulation and flow within the structure, but because of the pie-shaped nature of the lots, it makes a corner pinch point toward the front. And so, as we laid out each of the building footprints on the lots, there's a rare occasion where we need just scant inches in order to place the footprint on there, and so we're at, most of them come down to about seven and a half at the tightest point, which still gives us the 15 feet from structure to structure for the fire department. But there are a few places where we may have less than the eight feet on one side of the property line, and then perhaps more than eight feet on the other, but to get all of it to fit, it's like a puzzle, and so there are a few places where the very corner of a building, we would like just a few scant inches in order to place it on there without having to set the house back excessively, so that we either end up in the back slope or an excessively long drive, which eats up the backyard. So it's the best design that we could come up with, but there is that request of a few inches of space on those pinch points. As far as the, there was a question regarding the three-foot setback, and there is an additional landscape buffer there, and then the goal would be to put the parking for the neighborhood business portion there, so there'd be good access to the side of the building, be it from the fire department or for maintenance. And then the actual structure of the neighborhood business, mixed-use building that I kind of have in mind but have no tenants for at this point, would be at the very corner of the property. There was one other comment in there about a swale, and I think we've resolved the swale issue, because it was drawn on one of the, it was on one of the drawings when, in fact, we already have an underground storm sewer pipe there, so it was just something on the drawing that, it was a mistake. So we went in earlier and resolved that. I didn't know if there were any other questions concerning the layout or the other requests concerning setbacks.
So, any other questions for Phil? Great, okay, thanks very much, Phil, appreciate that. So, we'll move next to anybody that has some concerns or objections to the project. Please state your name and address when you come up, and if you would, we'd like to limit to three minutes if possible.
My name is Steve Kavlik. The address is 1109 Slonikor Drive, City of Moscow. So, it's a general question that involves this property, as well as it would to many of the other developments that are being prepared. of the other developments that are being proposed at this time. And even though the commission has looked at the water use, that it has proper flow capability, who or when is the water table addressed to know that for the rest of the citizens, that the, there will be not a huge impact on our shrinking water table? Or who could I go to to have that question addressed?
Mike, I'm gonna pass that one to you.
Well, currently, we utilize about half of what our current water right is for the city. And so the city council would have to develop some type of policy that would limit the number of lots based upon current water usage. And we don't have any policy like that in place from city council. And so our policy up to this point is really to promote conservation as well as alternate water sources, which could be a surface water reservoir somewhere in Moscow Mountain.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes, please.
May we ask questions of the speaker?
Oh, well, that's a good question. I don't see why not.
Has the Palouse Basin...
Excuse me, ma'am, you're gonna have to go up and state your name.
Carol Hughes, Moscow. Do you want my street?
Yes, please.
2053 Damon Street, second from the top. My question involves, does or has the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee determined the water supply in such a way that it indicates how many residents now in Moscow it does support and how many in the future it will support? For example, there is, since our water is based on the Grand Ron Aquifer and not on the other aquifer that was thought to be used because that water was determined not adequate and certainly not of the quality that we're deserving in Moscow. So the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee has been studying the amount of water we have. Presently, it's a little less than it was in previous years, but that may be because we have had fewer people based on the COVID infection. So I guess my question would be, if the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee has not determined how many households the water will support, would it do that and when?
I, my understanding is that it continues to be a work in progress by PIBAC. We don't have any such information available to us, and I think that those studies are ongoing. So I, I think it's a, a really valid point that we don't have an answer for probably at this point in time.
But it does seem then rather premature to be not only proposing but accepting the plans for maybe 200 houses here and 200 houses there, but 56 houses running down a gully that is frequently wet all year round, regardless of how dry it is, and that we don't really know how much water we have, and we're okaying additional units that are going to use water.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us speak of our objections to this project. This is one of the busiest areas in Moscow.
Excuse me, ma'am, sorry. Your name and address first, please.
I'm sorry.
That's pretty right.
It's Patricia Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. And I live at 437 Harvest Drive, which overlooks this property. We'd go up Rolling Hills, the first left turn.
Okay, thank you.
This is one of the busiest areas in Moscow and getting busier, obviously, particularly since these twin homes are going to be put all through the property instead of single-family I, I don't oppose the homes, but I do oppose the store. I've talked about doing a convenience store, and we're talking about the corner of Third Street and Mountain View Drive, right out on the street. And this, this is a street, if you live in the area, you know that the school situation is such that the kids ordinarily walk to school, and in the morning, they would be tempted, I'm afraid, to go into a convenience store, and especially in the afternoon when they come home from school. And it's, it seems very much out of place for a residential area. The, you know, we have McDonald's School and the, the school for the, the middle school, and also a lot of high school students. And they're riding their bikes and walking across the Third Street Bridge and so forth. And to put a, a store in there that probably would have various things that would appeal to them and some things that probably shouldn't appeal to them. And I, I just think that a store like that has no business in a home situation. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. So anybody else? There's somebody just in back of you that raised their hand.
My name is Jean Elliott. I am, our family has lived here in the rural area of Viola for over 50 years. I am taking the long view of all these proposed developments in this town. And I think I might be watching the decline of our little community. We have a lot of people moving, wanting to move here, and I would suggest that we put a moratorium on any development until we, until you get the opinion of the people of It's kind of like a Ponzi scheme. You have several large businesses coming. Schweitzer Engineering, MC, and then G, we need more employees and we need more houses. And then you'll get more people here, and then it'll be something else you need. And it's, I don't know if you've been to North Quarter Lane or Boise or Lewiston, the traffic is horrible. And the things that we love here are susceptible to being lost. We are an agricultural community. You go any way out of this town, and we have farmers and fields, and they're out there now. And this is not a good place to grow a huge community in the middle of the Palouse Hills, which are wonderful agricultural land. And there's houses being built on, out of town. People can apparently sell their ag land and get a lot more money. And I suggest that the city and the county get together and put a stop to all this until we gauge what the, what the town people that have been here for a long time want. Not all the people wanting to come here for this, that, or the other thing. And as far as the water, kind of interesting that only one possible of the four choices that the PIBAC is looking at, the one mentioned was a reservoir on Moscow Mountain. And that would directly affect the area where my family has lived. Because the one description in the PIBAC document shows a water pipe coming from the far side of Moscow Mountain. And you can tell what roads it goes on, and it would be right down from our property. And we have a wonderful little road with trees on either side, houses, and you know if a water pipe comes in there, all that's gonna go by the wayside. So even though I live in rural Leitau County, all this development going on here affects the rural people of Leitau County. And sure, a lot of people are gonna make a lot of money. And people want to move here, but that doesn't mean we have to say, okay, fine, we need, we want, we want all this growth. Maybe we don't. So we need to look, we need to ask the people of Moscow. There was a parking study that was done.
Excuse me, your three minutes is up.
I'm over.
Okay, thank you so much.
But I don't see why we can't take a survey of the people of Moscow and find out how much growth they want.
Okay, thank you. Yes, in the back, please.
Hello, my name is Elise Augenstein. I live at 2229 Moser Street. And I wanted to talk about my concerns about flooding. I'm sure you all are aware of the problems with flooding down by Mountain View, Hillcrest, Bridge Street, where Paradise Creek has basically overrun the, the houses there. I understand that there's a stormwater retention area that's being built in. However, I worry that two factors will increase the problem with flooding, which is already severe. One is the much-increased impermeable area due to the roads, the driveways, the houses. The second is that there is a stream that runs down the lowest part of the area that is actually outside the, the plat that you guys talked about. The planned swale that turned into a pipe routes the water from that stream down to the storm sewer, which goes directly to Paradise Creek. And I don't know what the plans are for the area above that in the valley, but there's significant water that comes down there. So I want to absolutely make sure that the city pays attention to that because the problem is already bad, and I am afraid it will get much worse.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike, did, any particular comments on the flood mitigation? I know those are some issues that have been in progress.
Yeah, I mean, that, that study's ongoing, so we're looking at the whole corridor here as far as any flood mitigation strategies to reduce the flooding along the corridor. But just to speak to the stormwater, so every development is required to detain at the pre-development rate, which means, you know, all the impervious surfaces that are generated as part of the development, those have to be mitigated as if it was just raw land, and that's the, the rate that it gets conveyed after it goes to stormwater detention ponds. That's why we, in every subdivision, we have three or four tracts that are dedicated to stormwater detention ponds because it's accommodating for all the runoff of the additional impervious surface that's created. So it has to pretty much convey the runoff just like it was the undeveloped land. And then the, the other drainage that's further to the east, actually, in the, the proposed Harvest Hills second addition, that drainage is actually the majority of the drainage that's coming off of the Rolling Hills additions. And it's just a, you know, pipe that comes from their stormwater detention ponds and ends up being conveyed on the surface, and then ends up running down to a 24-inch culvert that takes the water underneath Damon, upstream of Bridge Street, and that's where that water is, ended up ejected into Paradise Creek. So as part of that development, that pipe will no longer just be extracting the water on the raw land. It would be piped all the way down to additional stormwater detention ponds. So it should alleviate the, some of the flooding issues that you have with some of that water coming off the hillside.
Great, thank you.
I should stand up here so you can see me. Sorry about that. Can't do anything about it. So I've heard all the wonderful detail that you have on...
Name, name it ever, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Kathy Warren, and I live at 2469 East F Street in the Village North, in the Village Green of Good Sam. And I've lived here in this whole area for 60 years. And even though when I lived out in the country, I was constantly in the city and using the streets for biking, driving, walking, et cetera. So we've heard a lot about the water problem, which definitely needs to be communicated. We need to know that there has been a committee that has investigated the water usage, the water, the water table, how much, 500 new homes, because there's not only this direction, this, this development, but there's two others. How much is that going to affect all of us? We had this big discussion a long time ago about the mining down in the, in the Viola area, remember? And that was all turned down because we didn't have enough water to support that, that particular enterprise. So we need to know, it needs to be communicated to us, what study has been made and to reassure us that there will be enough water for all of us. Secondly, no one has addressed yet tonight the congestion. And I walk around there a lot. I bike around there a lot. The kids walk around there from the medical, middle school. And around, there's several times of the day when it's very congested. You can hardly drive through, and that is after school, when all the parents are picking up their kids from school. And soccer and baseball times, this is seasonal, I realize, but huge amount of traffic. And then with Logos School coming in, if that ever materializes, there's going to be tremendous amount of traffic there, there as well. And there's constant, what I want to know is, is there any plan to widen or to, for infrastructure improvements to take care of this congestion, which is not only annoying but dangerous for our children, for our elders, like myself, walking and, and using that area? So are there paths going to be planned? Are there going to be, is there going to be any kind of infrastructure change? Are we going to have stoplights where they're needed? We really need to know that all those details have been taken care of. And also emergency, I know that, I also read back to 2014 where they, when they first proposed this, and there's much concern about whether or not the service vehicles and fire vehicles could get in easily if an emergency happened. And I haven't seen any studies that said that we have answered all those concerns that were coming up in 2014. So communication's going to be very important, but communication of actual remediation will be very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that the fire... Thank you, and I believe that the fire department did review and has approved the access particularly, not so much about this particular one that we're talking about, but in the next one that we're gonna be talking about, the second, that'll be the next public hearing, but.
Consider the big picture, too, the three huge new developments.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else?
My name is Carol Hurley Hughes, and I have lived in Moscow for 55 years. Fifty-four of those, no, 50 of those were spent on nearing road outside the city limits. Six months ago, I bought a house on Damon Street at the top. At the time, I called both the city and the county, and I asked what was going to happen with that area below me, because if you look across from my house, the hills are precipitous on the other side, and the water seems to gather in the bottom. And I just wondered what they were planning to do with that, but nobody seemed to know, and they said they couldn't tell me. And I said, well, I want to buy a house in town, and I'd like to know if there are any new developments coming in, and they said, we don't know, and we can't announce it. So I bought the house on Damon Street, and I'm still in the process of renovating it. Now, when I first saw this, I was concerned about 56 houses on not a very large piece of property, and then I looked at the piece in Area 1 of the Harvest Hills proposed development, and as my former students would say, I went into orbit. I cannot imagine those squirrely middle schoolers and all the kids who are at the pool in the summertime, and then the skate park, and the tennis courts, and the sports fields at the middle school, and the additional fields that were built for soccer and for baseball or softball. All of that traffic is beyond comprehension if you have a young person who is in that area frequently. So the congestion bothered me, it also, the endangered, as I saw it, situation with the young people bothered me. And then I know a few older people who have lived on Mountain View Road for years. One, a new widow, lives right across the road from this development. She's lived there for decades. Her house is small, her gardens are beautiful, but you can't get out of her driveway if it's after school or during a busy time at one of those fields. To think about why that area would have to be zoned PUD was beyond the people that I asked. I kept saying to people, well, what about this, what about this? Everybody in Moscow said, that I spoke with, they were really concerned about this, but they thought it was a done deal. I don't think it's a done deal, and I look at this mission statement, and I don't think it's a done deal. I really believe that the people in Moscow, if we had an opportunity before a meeting to talk together, to recognize, as Ms. Warren said, what is really going to come about, maybe we would have a much better turnout. I found a sign, I didn't get a letter, I live within 60 feet of the proposed Area 1, but my neighbors didn't get letters, they just, I think I met one person who said, I received a letter about two weeks ago. But at the last minute, as I was ripping a deck off my house that we're remodeling, I saw the advertisement that said, there is going to be a meeting, and it was a sign stuck up on Jansen Road. Now, Jansen Road is part of the proposal, the proposal Area 2. Now, that road supposedly was going to go through. I'd like to meet the person who would agree to go down that road on an icy day, because it just goes like that. So there is no way that you could traverse that, except on skis. So I guess what bothers me is that so few people knew about it. When I explained, time, when I explained, they all said, can you just move to delay it until people know more about it and find out why it was zoned PUD? Thank you.
I, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. I was concerned about, because we had seen your email prior to this, that you hadn't received it. I actually went back and looked at the address list, and unfortunately, I think that the previous owner to your house is who got the mail, so it may have been forwarded, I don't know.
Okay, but then makers are also new to the area.
And they didn't.
They didn't get it, and the people right next door to me, who's been there for longer, didn't get it. And I met a man by the name of Paul walking on the road, and I asked him if he got it, and he said, no, he did not get it, he put it in the street.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, anybody else?
Let's ask a question about the.
Yeah.
Mike, let me just interject here. Can you just talk about the public, the neighborhood meeting? What was the response? We have a list of many people who were apparently contacted, is that fair?
Are you referring to the neighborhood meeting that was conducted by the applicant, or?
Yes. In other words, in the packet, we have 60, 70, 80 names. Are we saying those people were contacted or were not?
Yeah, those are the same people that were contacted for the neighborhood meeting as well as this public hearing notice. So everybody within 600 feet gets contacted as for a public hearing. So we double that, state code requires 300 feet, and we go to 600 per city code, as well as posting signs at prominent locations of the property.
How many people here tonight were contacted?
Were contacted?
Were. You knew that there was a neighborhood meeting that you could attend?
And I did see the minutes from the meeting, I know it wasn't attended to the extent of the mail-out, but yeah, I kind of was curious about the mailing.
Well, it could be, I mean, over time, we get these meetings, it could be that during this COVID time, none of us are quite certain how we're supposed to act, and so going to meetings has been a little bit reduced, I guess we could say. So I don't want to make any excuses for anybody, but I just don't know how many of these people that were, that got a note, how many of them might have come to the meeting. Thank you.
Great, thanks, ma'am.
Well, if you're also, if you're beyond 600 feet, and 600 feet isn't a whole lot, it's twice what the state requires, but if you're beyond 600 feet, you do not get a letter. But it is posted in the paper, if you look at public records, multiple times, and the property's posted, unless you have a reason to look at that, you wouldn't probably notice. But there are those other points.
So, moving on, is there anybody else that would like to speak concerns about this particular project, ma'am?
Well, I just have one more comment.
Jeanne Elliott, again. Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate to be making these big, huge changes in Moscow. In the, we're still in the pandemic, and people are not going to come to meetings in the pandemic, and I think developers know that. It's a good time to put things through when people can't respond.
Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I don't think I was strong enough in my feelings about the store. I'm worried about the kids going into a store, basically, just a store with pop and beer and various things that they might find enticing, and I think they would spend too much time there if they, if they walked to school. Now, parents could start picking them up, I suppose, and they would, they would then not be interested in going in the store. They may be interested, but their parents wouldn't.
So it's my understanding that there's been no decision made on what commercial facility is going in there.
That's what I wondered, if they're not part of the plan or not.
Well, that, from talking to the people who are developing the property, that is what they would like to do, is have a convenience store.
Okay, and we have not heard that particular piece of that. I mean, that has not come to us, so I appreciate your concern, I just, it isn't a piece of information that we have that we can act on.
Well, I guess you'll have to ask questions, because both of the meetings that I went to, they talked about the convenience store idea, which worries me because of all the children in the area.
Okay, thank you.
And then just a point of clarification, this property's already zoned neighborhood business. So council determined back in 2015 that it was appropriate to be zoned neighborhood business, so every use that's currently within neighborhood business is allowed on the property right now, with that which would include convenience stores, restaurants, all the uses that I listed there. So it's not a discussion as to whether or not we should allow those types of commercial uses, the property already allows them.
It's permitted by code, yes. Okay, anybody else that would, and anybody else with a general comment or clarifications? Yes, ma'am?
Do we have to go, but?
The requirements or the granting of that permission to set up that area as a business area, if it were granted in 2015, this is considerably later, and so much more has transpired in and around Moscow, that it would seem to me that before you could go ahead with anything, you would have to relook at that. Wouldn't you think? I mean, if I bought a car, and they said, well, this car was built in 2015, but it's okay today, well, it's not, because all the emission standards have changed. So I would think that there would be a relook at this situation. May not be allowed, but that's what seems practical.
Yeah, the zoning is a settled issue in this particular case, so. All right, with that, one other comment regarding the public hearing is that we received a number of emails from people, some of them came in late. I would like, excuse me, make all of those emails, whether they were received timely or otherwise, some even came in later today, a matter of public record, so that we have on record concerns about the issues. So with that, I am going to close the public hearing, and we will go into deliberation with the commission. One of the things that I would like to comment on is that the issue of the zoning and the plating, which took place, Mike had referred to it in his presentation in 2015, there was a lot of neighborhood concern at that time as well. And the initial decision by planning and zoning is that we did not approve the rezone, which then made a moot point of the plating. That decision was overturned on appeal by city council in 2016, I believe it was, Mike. So we've visited this issue, and there are a lot of the concerns, we understand, we appreciate your comments, but I kind of wanted you to have the context that we've sort of been down this road with this project to a certain extent, and some of the issues that you're concerned about, I know will be works in progress, traffic, for example, water is a work in progress. But the decisions with respect to the zoning and the plating have, in effect, been made. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Question, ma'am.
I'm sorry, the comment period's over, thank you.
Just wondering how we could change that.
So I'll turn it back to commissioners for comments or questions that you might have.
I think you just said it all, just right then, just said it all. I mean, it's already been zoned, it's, and I understand you guys, too, it's, I understand the traffic, but I think the traffic will be worked out if there does become a traffic issue, obviously, then we'll attack that, right? I mean, that's kind of how we.
Well, Mountain View, like I discussed earlier, is a minor arterial, and Third Street's a collector's street, so those are intended to carry the highest volumes of traffic in the city. There's a reason why all these institutional uses are located, because you don't want those institutional uses in the middle of a neighborhood, because it's going to cause traffic issues if it's just a local neighborhood street, and safety issues with children. So that's why we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, all these facilities will have bike lanes, and then we also have a project further down on Mountain View to install the roundabout, and that's actually gonna move forward this year, is what we've heard. It was originally slated for three years from now, but it sounds like we're getting grant funding for it this year. So the roundabout will be installed at the intersection of Sixth and Mountain View, and then there will be sidewalks installed all the way down to Joseph Street on the west side where they're not, and some widening. So that's one of the last remaining pieces of Mountain View that needs to be improved, and that'll be improved this year.
Yeah, I just think, like Neil's always said, you gotta grow up, or you gotta grow out, or you gotta fill in, and I think we're just filling in, I think it's, I think it, I think it's a good fit, I like it, I, but I understand the concerns, I empathize with you, but I just, I think it's good.
Mike? Joel, we haven't visited with you, any questions, comments? Oh, your volume's off.
Okay, there. I'm struggling slightly, but I, I don't think that the city of Moscow is ready to declare a moratorium on more people. I, and that is certainly not the proper role for the Planning and Zoning Commission. If such a declaration was to be made, it would have to be made by city council, but I, I like Moscow the way it is. Moscow's gonna change. There are more people probably gonna come here, and that's probably the way it is. That's, that tends to be the way we do things in this country. So I guess I'm, I'm accepting that we will see some development. I don't think that the proposals for, you know, the acreage that we've seen, talked about, and the number of potential homes talked about, those aren't gonna happen overnight. It would be a very long process, I suspect. Moscow has never, Moscow has often grown, but slowly. I don't, we may grow a little bit faster, but I think that's probably the way it's gonna be. That's true of many places in this country. People are, people are coming.
Thanks, Joel. Neil?
So we're happy to have you turn out this evening, for sure. So, we're happy to have you turn out this evening, for sure. We've been pretty lonely for the last year, and, uh, more than that, we've really been lonely for the last five or six years. Scott can tell you that we haven't seen much growth, we haven't seen new subdivisions for quite a period of time. So I would like to try to soften the blow to you a little, a bit, that, uh, these two projects that we're hearing tonight have been in the works for several years, and it's the details of the issue, but it is a part of our city that is growing. There's houses all around it. The thought that we won't fill it in, I think you have to walk away from that. It's going to fill in, it's just the nature, we, we've, we've, we've gone by that. Now, I appreciate those of you who are worried about water. We all should be worried about it in our town, since we are not in an alluvial plain, but know more about it than most of you do. So I don't think you can raise that flag and catch our attention terribly well, because this project has been around for several years, and we're waiting for, we've been looking for the right way to see it happen, and, uh, so, uh, and growth. Are we going to have, stop having children? How many of you are happy that your sons and daughters had five kids, or four, or three, or two? Growth is going to happen. Idaho's one of the growing states. You can get used to it. If you don't want to be in a state that isn't growing, go to New York. Hello? So if you look at the broader picture, I think that, uh, I want to assure you that in the, in the 40 years, unlike, unlike Carol, I haven't been here 56 years, I've only been here 40 years, so, you know, what do I know? But, um, I do believe that our growth has never approached more than 1% a year, we're not growing rapidly. And so the sort of scare tactic that's, my gosh, Moscow's changing, and maybe it should, maybe we should be, actually become a, a larger town. I think you have to consider that. So anyway, I just, we hear you, we, we're happy that you're talking to us, but I think that we, we do need, we appreciate your encouragement, that we will look carefully. Uh, there's, there's commissions to look at traffic, but we look at planning and zoning issues, and that's what we deal with here. And so this, the, the horse is really out of the barn on this project, if you will. I know you think maybe it'll stop, but I shouldn't think so, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty positive about it.
Yeah. Um, Rich, any comments, from you?
I don't think so. I, I think one important thing to point out is that this is a larger neighborhood business parcel as is, and they could build something much more like I, I'm hearing that people don't want, really. And I, I mean, I think they're trying to make what the need is currently, which is residential, is in need, and I, I, I think that Moscow needs it, and I, I'm, I'm happy with the change, actually.
Scott?
You know, I look at this, and I, we've had discussions about density, and this seems to fit what we've been discussing about for this piece. I don't know what the ratio is, Mike, that we've gone over in the past.
Well, typically with R2, R3 development, anywhere between four and eight units per acre, you know, this is a 2.16 acre, and there's 10 units on it, so, you know, sitting somewhere around five on it.
Victoria?
Okay, so, there are many sides to go into this. Certainly, planning and zoning is not in a position to call a moratorium on development, that's not in our power, it's not in our purview. If you want to bring that forward, you have to go to city council, and it's not going to, and you can't do it midstream, so somebody's trying to do something today, you can't suddenly change the rules on them, you have to, if, it's like any law, if you want to change a law, you got to go through the process. Planning and zoning tries to, to see things in a sustainable fashion, and that, that's give and take on all sides. Developer, if somebody wants to build a house, you, you as a neighbor don't get to go over there and say, I don't want you to build a two-story house, sorry, I, it's just, I don't like it, or I don't want you to build, or, and I don't want you to build a little hovel, and city will come up and say, well, there's codes, you can't build a hovel, and you can't build a house that's 10 stories high. There's parameters, but you don't get to tell your neighbor exactly what they, what they will do. And developers that have land that they want to develop, we can't tell them, you're not allowed to develop your property. You can only try to shape that in some reasonable way with give and take, because it's a free country, and people have a right to do certain things. So yes, if it causes more traffic, then we need to respond with how we are going to deal with traffic. If it takes more water, we need to deal with how we're going to deal with water. City's working on that, there are no easy answers. Density is part of the solution to working on things like this for, for affordable housing, like Scott mentioned. People can't find places to live, and if they wind up living out of town, then they're doing a lot of gas and a lot of commuting, and they're, they're living in houses that aren't as good, so their power bills go up, so it becomes less affordable, but it may be where they wind up living. They can't even find a place in Moscow. So we've, we've asked developers, in a sense, by putting options out there, to try and come up with ways to make houses more affordable, and twin homes, I mean, when I first heard about twin homes 10 years ago, I thought, holy moly, what's all that about? And until I found out what that was about, you know, I didn't know. I personally don't want to live in a twin home, but a lot of people do, and it makes it more affordable. Townhouses and, uh, uh, row, row houses and all those other options help people find a place to live, and a lot of people are winding up in apartment situations, like with students, you know, the big apartment structures, because they can't find a house, they can't find anything to live in. And so we've asked developers to try to get more creative and to try to offer, uh, fill the need for affordable housing and different kinds of subdivisions. PUD, that's part of what that is for, and that's what this development is doing. It's doing, it, it has created a, a way to get more affordable housing here and, um, make it work. And yeah, there's going to be issues with growth, and we have to figure out how to tackle that as a city. You're going to have to go through city council to, to handle the really big issues like that. But, um, that's probably the big points that I have. This, I, you know, this is a pretty creative use of, of how they want to use this land, as I understand it now, 10 years later, after going to lots of meetings and paying attention to what's going on. So, density is another word that I never liked, but I understand it now, I understand why it's there. So I hope, I hope, I mean, all you can do is the best you can do.
So I think we're ready to move forward with the decision, so, uh, that would mean that, would somebody like to make a motion, and if so, what that motion would be in a second, so I'm, I'm open for decision here.
I would recommend approval of the plat, of, with the conditions that Mike had. I think he has some conditions up there on the, uh.
And also the PUD?
Yeah.
And the, and the plat, so we have, those are both considered together, correct, Mike?
The, the PUD and the plat. You can do it in one motion if you'd like, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a.
And you're saying along with the two, uh?
With the conditions.
Yeah, the two conditions.
Two conditions, yeah. I second that.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you all so very much, um, we're sensitive to your concerns about neighborhoods, we all, um, live in neighborhoods that we have the same concerns. I just want to thank you very much for, for coming out and speaking with us tonight, even though it might be a decision that you didn't agree with, but, uh, anyway. So we're ready to move forward, uh, just, the, um, we'll go to the, yes?
We also need to direct staff to prepare the relevant criteria.
Oh, uh, yes, we need a motion for the relevant standards and criteria?
I saw move.
Okay, Mike, move.
Second.
Victoria, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we got, Jennifer, did you, you got that one, the?
Yeah, Nelson and Eva.
Yep. Yep, got it. Okay, all right, um, we're moving to the fourth agenda item, which is a public hearing, proposed preliminary plat of a 17.2 acre generally located area, generally located east of the intersection of Third to Mountain View, within the city of Moscow, Harvest Hills Second Edition. Uh, Mike will give us a overview presentation before we start the public hearing.
Thank you again. So this is a public hearing for the Harvest Hills Second Edition preliminary plat. And so this is the property at the center of your screen, highlighted in red. See that here, you can see Jansen Street running north-south, and the stub here to the north, uh, Third Street within Rolling Hills Eighth Edition, and so, uh, this being an older image in 2018, uh, these, this infrastructure has already been completed, uh, Crestview has already been extended to Third Street, Third Street's been constructed as well as, uh, down to Sixth Street and Atani, and the majority of the lots within this, uh, Rolling Hills Eighth Development have been constructed. Mozer Park here is to the east, and that has been, uh, dedicated but not constructed So looking at the Harvest Hills Second Edition proposal, 7.2 acre area, and a preliminary plat to create 56 single-family parcels, which range in size from a little over 7,200 to a little over 24,000 square feet in size. And then just to give you the full background on this one, in 2005, uh, this property was annexed and rezoned from agricultural forestry to the moderate-density residential zone, which is the R2 zone, and there was a preliminary plat proposed at the time, and it was the Windfall Hills subdivision was the, uh, name of that subdivision. Proposed to be 77 single-family residential lots, the average lot size was 9,700 square feet, uh, that equates to about a four and a half dwelling unit per acre density, and then the roadway alignment's virtually the same as the Harvest Hills proposal, uh, back in 2015, 2013. Uh, it was approved August 1st, 2005, and this is what Windfall Hills in 2005 ended up looking like. So in 2006, the applicant ended up submitting a PUD proposal to coincide with the plat, and along with that were sample house elevations with similar architectural style, proposed reduced front yard setback from 25 to 10, and then the developer proposed to provide additional landscaping and public amenities. Uh, and that was approved July 19th, 2006 by city council. And then in 2008, the developer, Windfall Hills, approached the city about a Verizon pedestal, uh, that needed to be moved as part of the proposed subdivision. Uh, at the time, the city was contemplating road improvements on Mountain View, which included the portion adjacent to Windfall Hills, and then the city had the desire to extend the section of Jansen from the north subdivision plat boundary to its intersection with Damon Street. Uh, then came along the 2008 memorandum of understanding, uh, where the city and the developer reached an agreement that was executed through the MOU, approved by council, happened on, uh, April 21st of 2013. And, uh, the gist of that memorandum of understanding was that the city would contribute up to $50,000 towards the relocation of the Verizon pedestal, and be responsible for the underground utilities on the Jansen Street extension. And the developer would be responsible for public improvements to Mountain View, which included the bicycle and pedestrian path on the east side, above-ground improvements for the Jansen Street extension. Then in 2008, the final plat and development agreement were approved by council, uh, some of the conditions as part of the 2008 MOU were not satisfied, and then, uh, they ended up updating the MOU, and that became the 2009 MOU, uh, and so it laid out the city's responsibility, which was improvements to Mountain View, including paving, curb, gutter, drainage system, and the developer's responsible for the total cost of Jansen, uh, as well as underground utilities in phase one of the subdivision. And then dedication of street right-of-way and 25-foot and 35-foot wide easements on the east side of Mountain View, so street, ped, and bicycle path, and the final plat shall be recorded by June 3rd, 2009. So the city ended up constructing those agreed-upon improvements to Mountain View, but the developer only completed the street and the 25-foot and 35-foot easement dedications, and never filed the plat, or paid for the Jansen Street extension, uh, construction. And the final plat approval expired, uh, which required the developer to start from the beginning of the subdivision plat process. Then came 2013, uh, and so this was the history that we covered in the first, uh, application, so we had the preliminary plat for Harvest Hills, so it was similar, we had those 75 lots, the applicant determined the project was not financially feasible, and never ended up, uh, advancing to final plat stage, and this was really the design of that Harvest Hills proposal at the time, so almost identical to the Windfall Hills proposal. And then, uh, they ended up dividing, uh, the property and, uh, moving forward with Harvest Hills First Edition. It's that 7.45 acre portion, and then there was the rezoned comp plan amendment preliminary plat that occurred in 2015, that we just discussed. And February 1st, 2016, council approved the rezoned comp plan, and then, uh, council ended up approving the preliminary plat, uh, with the three conditions that we also discussed. So that brings us to the proposal today. Just looking at the west side of this property, so this is a topography map, you can see there's quite a bit of slope here on the south, um, there's current grading onto the stormwater detention pond. And then you can see that extension of Jansen Street, which has been platted but not developed up to this point, and then Mozer Park property here to the east, and then the continuation of Third Street, uh, through the Rolling Hills additions. Looking at the comp plan designation, the majority of the surrounding area is auto-urban residential, with the exception of the neighborhood business parcel in Harvest Hills First Edition, that's suburban commercial. And you also have various parkland properties, uh, which are designated in the green designation, that's parks and open space. So looking at what auto-urban residential says in the comp plan, it's predominantly single-family, states that 7,000 to 11,000 square foot, uh, lots are the typical size, they're usually more isolated from surrounding uses, may require residents to rely more on automobile transportation. Uh, it should be those areas generally anticipated to be developed, low to moderate-density residential, uh, uses at densities between three to six units per acre, which could include a mix of detached, single-family, twin-home, or townhouse residential dwellings. And then it points to either the R1, R2, or R3 zones as, uh, being appropriate, and that's really in order to create a mixture of attached and detached dwellings where appropriate. So looking at the, uh, R2 zone, you can see the subject properties currently zone that designation, as well as, uh, a lot of the surrounding area to the north, south, and to the east, and then of course, uh, the first addition to the west is zoned a combination of R3 and neighborhood business. Uh, looking at what the zoning code states for the R2 zones, appropriate in the following circumstances, so single, where, single-family dwellings predominate the area, uh, terrain's not harsh or irregular, smaller lot sizes can be accomplished without extensive earthwork, utilities and other public facilities are adequate for the densities allowed, uh, existing lot development patterns and policies embodied within the plan also guide the application of this zoning district, so the comprehensive plan in this case. And then use is permitted in the R2 zone, primarily it's a single-family zone, so, uh, mainly just single-family residential dwellings, but we also have some urban agriculture opportunities as well, uh, group childcare facilities, public parks and recreation facilities, but primarily a single-family zone. Uh, that brings us to the preliminary plat, proposed at 56 single-family lots, ranging from that, a little over 7,200 to a little over 24,000 square feet in size. ranging from that little over 7,200 to a little over 24,000 square feet in size. The minimum lot size for the R2 zone is 7,000 square feet. So, all the lots being proposed meet that minimum, as well as the minimum lot width for the zone, which is 60 feet. And the average lot size for this proposal is 10,368 square feet. That equates to 4.2 units per net acre. And then, just did a quick rundown of the average lot sizes in the area. Moser Estates, a little over 12,000 square feet in size is the average. Sky Views, 13,446. Damon Areas, 10,374. Rolling Hills, six and seven are just between 11,000 and 12,000 square feet. And then, Rolling Hills eighth is just under 10,000 square feet is the average lot size. So, really comparable to the surrounding area for average lot sizes. Looking at the street network. Third Street, like we discussed previously, is a collector that equates to a 34-foot-wide street section. Does have bike lanes on both sides of the street. There's no on-street parking on collectors. Curb, gutter sidewalks on both sides. And then, Jansen Street and Amber Court are both local neighborhood streets. That's a 28-foot-wide street section with parking on one side of the street, with curb, gutter sidewalks on both sides as well. This brings us to the preliminary plat. This is the far west end. So, this would be the portion that abuts Harvest Hills first addition here. You can see just pretty standard above 7,000 square foot lots. All about the same size on this section, and it curves down. So, this would be Third Street. Ends up curving down and tying into Rolling Hills eighth. And then, you have Jansen Street, which tees intersection there and heads north, eventually connect to the north. And then, you can see the extension of Amber Court there. So, this is the far east end. Amber Court ends up making a large, I guess you'd call it a cul-de-sac, loop around some public open space that's proposed to be dedicated here at the center. Also have another dedication, a 10-foot-wide strip that ends up connecting and providing access to Moser Park, which is adjacent to the east. You also have, so the strip that we had just discussed to provide a connection to Moser Park. And then, there also is a pedestrian path that ends up connecting Third Street further to the south on Rolling Hills eighth subdivision. There's a common sidewalk in these common lot lines that ends up connecting to the boundary. So, there's another easement that's being proposed here to provide the sidewalk connection from the neighborhoods to the south to the park property is the main objective there. Let's take a look at our thoroughfare plan. So, we had just glanced at this in the previous application, but you can faintly see the green line, and this represents Third Street and future collector. So, it ends up extending through the property, going on the alignment that's currently constructed in Rolling Hills eighth, and will eventually join the park property here. So, it provides frontage on Moser Park on the south end. And then, ends up heading, proposed to head due north and connect with D Street. Utilities, water service. There's a main currently extended to the terminus of Third Street. Will be extended along the Third Street alignment. And then, of course, the 2012 water system plan. The existing system has adequate potable and fire flows in this area. And then, sanitary sewer. There's already an eight-inch main that currently exists in that Third Street alignment, and that was extended previously as part of an agreement between Windfall Hills and the Rolling Hills developers. So, that was intended to serve the Rolling Hills eighth addition. So, that's already been constructed on the Third Street alignment. And then, the comprehensive sewer system plan indicates the existing system's adequate to serve the additional flow. And looking at storm sewer. Currently conveyed through mains and Third Street to the stormwater detention ponds in the northwest and southwest corners of the subdivision. Stormwater main, Rolling Hills addition currently discharges onto the property, as I think I mentioned this previously on the last application. Then drains into a 24-inch culvert between lots two and three of Skyview Estates addition. That 24-inch culvert ends up heading north under Damon Street. Ends up going, extending into the creek above Bridge Street. Stormwater main will be connected from Rolling Hills additions to the Harvest Hills first addition. So, you can see the storm sewer network in the area. That's all the brown lines. So, this is where it discharges onto just the raw land here, onto the subject property. Eventually comes from the drainage of all of these streets. So, it's going to be Panorama, Atani, all the way down to Sixth Street. Pretty much drains in this direction and ends up being collected at various stormwater detention ponds, one of which being here, and then another one being here. And then, it eventually is intended to connect with the stormwater lines in Harvest Hills first addition and the stormwater detention pond. So, that's the water that you're seeing moving through the area and then being collected by that 24-inch culvert that you can see right here. So, instead of the water extending across the property and then being collected by that 24-inch culvert, it'll end up being piped down the Third Street alignment and connecting with the existing line in the first addition. This is just a closer view of that area. You can see the pipe extending there. And then, that 24-inch culvert that heads north and ends up being extended out in the creek just upstream of the Bridge Street Bridge. Yeah, parkland dedication. There is 13.32 acres in net developable area. The R2 zone requires a 5% dedication. So, there's a 29,013 square foot dedication requirement. There was previously a credit. So, there's 11,265 square feet of parkland, which was in excess of what was required as part of the first addition. The Parks and Rec Department and Parks and Rec Commission ended up recommending that that be banked for future phases of this development. So, with the excess retracted from the 29,000, you get 17,747 square foot dedication requirement. And the applicant's proposing a center island and Amber Court of 19,083 square feet in that 10-foot-wide access to Moser Park, which ends up being 1,525 square feet, which exceeds the parkland dedication requirement. And the Parks and Rec Commission had previously looked at this, as well as the department, and they recommend acceptance of the proposed dedication. That's a closer view of those two locations. So, with that, staff recommends to the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat with no conditions. In accordance with the commission's decision on the preliminary plat, direct staff to prepare the RCS document. I'd certainly try to answer any questions that you had.
So, any questions for Mike? Okay, Mike, thank you. I'm sure we'll have some as we proceed along. So, with that, I am going to open the public hearing. We'll conduct this the same way we did before. We'll start with the applicant, and then, we'll go to other concerns. And if you would all limit your discussion to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. So, Scott, you're up.
Yep, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. This one is pretty straightforward. We've been working on it since 2005, so there's not- and really what you're seeing tonight for this portion of it hasn't changed much at all. Some of the street standards have changed, but everything fits in kind of as it was. In the original proposal, they were looking at doing a boulevard through there, but it's such a narrow corridor that it was really a pretty bad idea. So, I think what we have tonight is really the best solution. And the Jansen Street connection, if there was ever any desire to just make that a walking path, I'm sure the developer would be glad to accommodate that. But the way it stands, the city wants it connected as a street. So, we do have a, we do have a design for that also. So, I can answer any questions or-
Any questions for Scott?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil, would you?
Phil Ryan-Gam, 620 East Palouse River Drive, Moscow. We've tried to lay out the lots to be compatible with everything that surrounds us and to make a design that we thought would make a nice community. The parkland dedication was a little larger than required. The lot sizes are relatively generous but compatible. We've worked to try and make a design that would work with the larger area. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Phil? Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. So, we'll open it up to anybody that's got, Dennis?
My name is Dennis Baird. I live at 2187 Moser Street and have been at that address for about 30 years. This development is directly below my house, so it's of some concern. It is, it consists of infill, which is a good thing, in my opinion. That's a good way to be doing subdivisions in Moscow. And many of the lots will be smaller, and there's actually a need for those. So, I'm not here to oppose the development, there's some good features. What I hope that the commission can consider is some ways to improve the plan. And the problem in my, there are several. My wife will address a couple of them, but the one I want to talk about is the fact that there's actually an intermittent stream in the bottom of the valley. The city has never recognized that, but it's wet much of the year. It actually runs as a stream. It's east of, mostly east of the Jansen Street extension. It's full of frogs this time of year. You can hear them a half-mile away. It's very good habitat for frogs or vegetation down there that is associated with wetlands. So, normally, the city of Moscow, when it looks at something that it doesn't consider a stream like that, an intermittent stream, simply fills it in, puts a storm sewer lined on it, puts gravel on top, and takes care of it, eliminates it. And that's a shame and also a mistake in this case. It's expensive to do that. It would be cheaper not to fill in the stream. The road, Amber Court, I guess it's going to be called, the road that will access those lots up in the valley probably will be just a bit south of the stream. And so, what, a good solution, which has been used in Lewiston and Cortalene, rarely used in Moscow, but used in lots of other towns, is to retain that as a swale, a long swale. It would end up just being a little dip. People can still build a driveway across it. Maybe you have to run a, the pipe, some kind of a culvert. But if that was retained, it would have the benefit of being cheaper. It would retain the frog habitat. And I think it would probably reduce the runoff that comes down that valley. And so, that might actually be a benefit to Bridge Street, to the lower creek, which are, were running floods quite often anyway, by retaining some of the water in that swale. Be a long swale down the valley. I think we could save some money and save some frogs and still not reduce any of the number of the lots or anything else. Everything would be proceeding as now planned, but we just wouldn't fill in that creek and run a pipe down it. So, I hope when the commission sets some conditions, which it can do, I think, asking either the city engineer's office or somebody to look into the swale or just directing that we have retained that as a swale, a lengthy swale down the valley, that would be a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn Baird. I live at 2187 Moser also. The question that I would like to raise for the P&amp;Z folks to take a look at is the one of parkland dedication. The idea behind having a large island in the center of a residential area that's so close to an existing parkland dedication, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. And putting those pieces together and making a larger park and perhaps actually developing the park, because it's my park. It's been 29 years, I'd love to see a park there. But the idea of having a larger place, I think, allows for a lot more flexibility in terms of the types of recreation that you can have in a park. I'm a frequent park user, so the idea of having a little place for a playground in the center of a traffic area isn't as exciting to me as having a larger place where you have a little bit more hiking trails and space to roam. But I do appreciate the challenges of trying to put all these things together, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, anybody else? Okay, sorry, yes, ma'am.
Jean Elliott again. Please record all my comments from the last consideration into this one. And I would like to say that 1% growth. You have 100 people, that's one person. You get up to 1,000 people, that's 10 people a year. 10,000, you get 100 more people. And 100,000 people, you get 1,000 more people a year. So, all of that, all those people, it's, requires more and more of everything. And we're looking at transmission lines and cell phone towers and water pipes and traffic and everything else. So, I reiterate, I don't care what- I do care, but I'm just saying, if we can do a study on parking, we can probably do a study on growth and get the opinions of the people of Leitau County in Moscow, what they want for the future. And it's easy to tell you to go talk to somebody else, but you guys are the advisors, and a lot of times, the city council listens to you. So, and you try to say something, and then, you get told you can't talk about it because it's being considered by P&amp;Z, and, you know, it's on the agenda, whatever. So, who could predict this ahead of time to talk about it ahead of time? Anyway. And I would like to say that our businesses in town, if we get into a lot of growth, we could have, you know, we've got Moscow Building Supply and Spence Hardware. Well, if we get a Lowe's, Menards, whatever, coming in, they're going to be hurting. And, you know, we had Jiffy Lube, I guess, and then, we get the other, the other one on north side of town. So, I mean, the businesses in Moscow need to sit up and pay attention to, because we've got a nice little small stores and, you know, just maybe one or two of each type. And we start growing, and we're going to have all kinds of people wanting to develop, you know, bring their business here, like we're going to get a target, and I'm not too happy about that. But I'm just saying, you know, I care. And I, I guess I'm bold enough to get up and say something in no simple terms. So, and I agree with Mr. Baird about trying to preserve the environment of the wildlife and everything else, both in the town and in the county. And I reiterate, this is an agricultural county. And as far as the water sources, I sure hope it doesn't get put as a reservoir in Moscow Mountain. There's other options, bringing it up from Snake River, something from the Palouse River, a conglomeration where we all try to conserve. But, anyway. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
As soon as that water comes, and they have to build a reclamation facility or whatever, they start putting chemicals in everything, because they got to, you know, decontaminate everything they're trying to, the water they're going to give Moscow. So, it's not, it's not, I don't have that down pat, but I think I've tended- So, it's not...it's not...I don't have that down pat, but I think I've attended a few PBAC meetings, and, you know, they got to start adding stuff to the water because of what they're doing to it. So, it's not any harmless solution, and, anyway.
Thanks very much. Yes, sir.
Dan Griebling, 2075 Damon Street. Just a quick comment on the Jansen Extension, living right there, and maybe I'd be agreeing with the developer. I would just as soon have a walking path through there, being immediately adjacent. I think the primary use case is probably kids walking to school at the McDonald's there. I understand if it's in the city's best interest to connect it with the street, but that'd just be, I guess, if it was up to me, it'd be kind of nice to have a walking path right there. Obviously, that's kind of my selfish interest right next to my house there, but that was kind of my only comment, so.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, well, with that, I will close the public hearing, and we'll open to...oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Phil?
Can you make a comment?
Yes, please, come. We'll leave the public hearing open for a few more minutes.
In terms of the swale that's in the bottom, I wouldn't characterize it as a stream. We farm that land. I'm a farmer, and we farm that land. It's been farmed for probably 130 years. It is wetter in the bottom than at the top. Water does flow down to there. But in terms of the road and connectivity, the elevations, if we were to leave the land ungraded, the elevations for the sewer line and whatnot wouldn't work. And so, I think what we've proposed has taken all of these various elements into account in terms of sewer connectivity.
Today, with that 24-inch culvert over there, and then there's also the concern of, you know, who maintains it? So, if it's on private property, people go out and landscape that area, and all of a sudden, the swale's compromised, and we have somebody's backyard being flooded because of landscaping that was put in. If it's in backyards, the city can't get back there to maintain it. And then, it just becomes more of a liability in that case. Usually, swales are in large swaths of public open space, so they can, you know, they're not going to be compromised, and they can filter the stormwater and pretty much serve the need without having too big of an issue with the street's maintenance to go in there and clear it out and maintain it. I, you know, I can't really picture how a swale would work in this subdivision, just with the existing sewer li...you know, sewer lines and street alignment. And, I mean, it would have to go through people's backyards and front yards, and I just see that as being problematic.
All right, thanks for the clarification. So, further questions from the commission? Mike?
The only question that I come up with, and it was brought up earlier, the fire department, emergency services, the transportation department, everybody is very involved in this and has been for quite some time. And the best avenue with the information we have is the avenue that this is taking. It just appears to me, as per Victoria, yeah, we need to work towards a greater goal, but we can't stop this progression at this point. I just...I like everything I've seen. I like everything I've read, the work by the applicants and the work by the city staff. It's been good.
Are we ready to move forward?
Okay.
In response to trying to take the island and moving it over to Moser Park, that would change the configuration of how the lots layout and everything. So, it's not...it's not that you could just pick up that piece of green land in the circle and move it over there. Plus, it...there are other factors involved, too. But it's the layout that works. And it kind of...a lot of the times, the parkland dedication is the pieces of property that don't work too well for the lots, or don't work as well as for the lots. And so, they get developed into parkland. I'm curious as to what you're going to do with it, because it's a nice circle of green, but I don't know what you're going to do with it. If you have kids crossing the street, it's not going to be a really busy street, so maybe that's okay. Somebody who knows more is going to look at that. But I did want to make mention of that.
Yeah, I like the idea. I'm not quite sure.
How it's going to work.
How to change it.
But if you can get it to work, nice idea, good idea.
Okay, so, are we ready to proceed? So, I would entertain a motion to approve...let's see, we've got...there was no conditions, is that correct?
Yeah, none.
No.
Okay. So, would somebody care to make a motion? Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Joel. So, Scott is moved and Joel's second. So, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, do we need an RCS on this one as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll need a second. Mike?
Also moved.
Moved to have staff prepare the RCS?
Second.
Okay, Rich, second. So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, so...
Rob, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
To the audience, Nell's mentioned that most of the time when we sit here, there's no one out here at all. And that's the case...when that's the case, you know, you don't know what the public is thinking unless you cross them when you're having coffee somewhere, or they're your neighbors or something. It does matter that you speak up. This goes into the record. City council sees it. You write letters to the editor. You make your voice heard, and then people realize, oh, this is something the city cares about. Maybe we should have a survey. Maybe we need to look into things. Your voice is accumulation of things. So, don't feel like that you came and nobody heard you. And we say we hear you. We hear you, and other people hear you, too. And it's the process. So, thank you.
Yeah, I...
...personal privilege. Most of the time, we can't hear you. I'm not wearing hearing aids. I have very good hearing.
Ooh.
But other people around me cannot hear you.
Okay, I...between masks and not having the mic close enough, our apologies, so. All right, now, before we move to the next...and I would like to also reiterate Victoria's comments. We do appreciate you coming. We don't always get to make the decisions that everybody likes, but it is an important process to have you here. So, thank you all for coming tonight. Mike?
And just based upon one of the comments about a survey, the city puts out the citizen survey every...actually, it's every year now, and that's occurred ever since early 2000. And those are the types of questions the city asks in those surveys. And so, all that documentation is available online for anybody to view.
And those are issues that we pay attention to. We have the responsibility for the preparing and updating the comprehensive plan, and those are issues that we pay attention to. So, if you get a survey, answer it. We do look at and listen to those comments, so. Now, before we move to the last item, does anybody want to take a break, or do you just want to move on through? I'll take that as let's move on through. So, okay, thank you again, everybody. Good night. So, the next agenda item is the proposed final planned unit development and final subdivision plat for numerous parcels generally located north of the intersection of Sixth Street and Deacon Avenue within the city of Moscow University Gateway on Sixth Edition. So, Mike, you are up.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. So, this is the final review of the final plat, the final PUD for University Gateway on Sixth project. And just as you recall, it was the 2.49 acre area generally located the north, the intersection of Sixth Street and Deacon Avenue. We had a subdivision plat component, which was the University Gateway on Sixth Edition. That included 27 townhouse parcels, one multifamily parcel, and three central business parcels. There was a PUD component as well, 27 townhouse dwellings, four-story multifamily building, which included 18 dwelling units, an enclosed parking garage on the first floor, and it utilized two existing parking lots that were previously used for University of Idaho student parking. There was access provided via an internal courtyard, which also serves as emergency services access as well. Rezone component was the third component, and there was the rezone from the motor business, multiple-family residential, central business, and university zones to a combination of central business and R4. So, really, it was just a cleaning up of the zoning configuration of the property, since it previously had four zones that spanned it. So, on September 8th of 2020, the council approved the project, the preliminary plat with the three conditions recommended by P&amp;Z, and approved the PUD and rezoned with no conditions. The three conditions that were as part of the preliminary plat, the first one pertained to a waterline tap design. The second one pertained to water lines from water mains to each water meter and fire hydrant are required to be within city easements to allow access. And then, just reiterating that the access drive at the southwest end of the property that connects to Sixth Street and Deacon Ave intersections limited to emergency vehicle and pedestrian access only. Then, on April 9th of 2021, the applicant submitted the final subdivision plat and final PUD to be reviewed by P&amp;Z and city council. And this was the property outlined in red. You can see Gormley Park here to the west. We've got some storage units here to the north. These were those two university parking lots that are now part of the project. Here's Patty's Kitchen here to the south, and then Sixth Street running east-west to the south as well. We've got Lily Street, which terminates into the project also. This is the final plat that's been submitted, so this is virtually the same as the preliminary plat. So, nothing has really changed, except for just a slight change within some of the townhouse lots. The applicant's been working on amending some of the lot sizes in order to better fit the building footprints. And so, there's been a slight adjustment on those, but that really hasn't affected anything as part of the project. Parkland dedication, you can see what was determined in the preliminary stages was a dedication of a pedestrian pathway, which connects to Gormley Park. City has plans in the future to tie that in and eventually connect a third street through Gormley Park. But you can see that with the dash line here, ends up going, actually straddling the property line, going out onto the park property, and then coming back onto the subject property before it diverges again here in the northwest corner. This would be the R4 parcel here, where the multifamily building's planned, and these are the three central business parcels. This is the PUD kind of construction plan, so you can see the internal courtyard here that serves as emergency services access. Then, you've got the pathway, which ends up going into the courtyard area and then diverging off on the Gormley Park property, the two parking lots here. And then, there is access off of Sixth Street, and this is just to the east of Patty's Kitchen and to the west of Poor Company Beer Hall. And then, there's Stax Restaurant in that building as well. This is the front elevation of the townhouses. Got the rear elevation, and then, these are the floor plans. There are three different styles, depending upon where they're at in the development. And then, just a rendering of a row of the townhouse units. And this is the elevation of the four-story multifamily building. See the parking garage on the first floor, and then, three stories of residential apartments above. The floor plan showing the parking garage, and just a sample of one of the floors. All the floors are essentially the same floor plan and number of units. And just a conceptual rendering of that building, as well as the townhouse buildings in the background. And then, looking northwest from the parking lot, the kind of the southeasterly parking lot area at the townhouses, as well as the multifamily building. So, staff has reviewed the final plat and PUD for conformance with city and state code requirements, found both to be in conformance. Therefore, we recommend the commission recommend approval of the final plat and final PUD for University Gateway on Sixth Edition to city council with no conditions. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions, and the applicants here as well to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mike or the applicant? Actually, I like this project. This is exactly what we've been...I mean, we keep talking about density and getting the town connected to the university. I think it's...I'm delighted to see that we're working toward this. So, I just wanted to throw that out. But, so, any questions for Mike or the applicant?
Mike, I think on the page that talks...I don't know if this is important, or if you catch it later. And I'm fully vaccinated, so he can hear me. The phasing plan for the page that talks about phases 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, phase 5 says townhouses 18 through 20. It's townhouses 15 through 20. So, I don't...you need to make that correction somewhere along the way, so that you have that right.
Okay.
There were a couple spelling errors.
Okay.
I'll tell you later, or you can find them.
I'll pass those on. Thank you.
So, any questions for either Mike or the applicant, or are we ready to go ahead? And, I mean, this seems pretty straightforward.
We went over, yeah. I think we went over this.
Yeah, exactly.
Basically, looks pretty much unchanged from what we've already seen.
Oh, here, I'm sorry. Public hearing.
It's not a public...
No, no.
Oh, this isn't?
No.
Okay, well...
Joel, you had something?
I had something.
I was just saying, it appears to be pretty much unchanged from what we've already seen.
Okay, I had a question.
Victoria?
So, the parts that aren't being developed right away, you're putting into grass, and then, that'll be torn out later. And I'm not opposing that. I'm just wondering if that something...that takes a lot of water, and it costs you in upkeep. I wonder if there's some kind of alternative, or what kind of grass you pick. Some grasses are less intensive than others. So, I don't...that's something that we ought to think about down the road, but I just wanted to throw that out. I mean, it's a logical thing to do, but it's a lot of water, and it's a lot of maintenance. And so, I just wondered if that had been thought about, or if you had any ideas on what you might want to do, or if you're just going to go grass.
My name is Jim Stevens. I live at 11245 Northeast Shore Drive in Hayden, but I have been working down here and a resident for the last 15 years. To answer your question, grass is exactly what's on Gormley Field, and so, we're trying to keep it uniform. We would be happy to put any other surface there that would take less water. We have...and are exploring other types of fescues that are less...that use less water. But we're really trying to not...we're trying to keep that park-like setting. We could just fence it, but that is ugly, and it doesn't make it look inviting. And so, the whole idea is to make it as seamless between the park, the university, and our development. And like Mike said, as we go through the development, they...those will be abandoned for the buildings.
Okay, well, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And I really appreciate the fact that this is your stance on infill. This is what we've tried to do. It's been 14 years, and what we're excited about is this is going to be the first time with the 27 townhouses that residents of Moscow will be able to live next to the university and have it be simple. So, it won't be student housing. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other questions or issues? Dennis, you were about ready to make a motion, I think.
Yeah, I'm just making sure everybody...yeah, I would make a motion that we approved the final plat and the final PUD. Yeah.
And Victoria's second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? And Mike, we don't need an RCS on this one, I don't believe, do we? And Mike, we don't need an RCS on this one, I don't believe, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. We're moving on then to the last couple of items here. Reports. Joel, I think you're on board for transportation.
Well, that's an easy one. The last Transportation Commission meeting I missed because I had a doctor's appointment in Spokane, and it turned out that I wouldn't have been able to attend it anyway because there were some, some of the things that we considered today were being considered by the Transportation Commission then. So and the next meeting of the Transportation Commission will be on the 13th of May, and I have not yet seen an agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mike, any announcements or correspondence?
None from staff, no.
All right. Do we have any other issues for the good of the order? Just a reminder, the next meeting, May 12th. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.